I will call to order the City Council's special study session for July 11, 2016. We could have a little commentary.
Mayor Slater?
Here.
Councilmember Abraham? Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Campbell?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember Hoder?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
I received a text from Mayor Pro Tem Pennington that he's running late. He may be here at 6:30 or 6:40. But he is running late and was notified by Councilwoman Abraham that she would not be here this evening. So, we have one discussion item this evening, and that is the transportation on Big Beaver. And I would like to welcome to this meeting Smart Deputy General Manager, Robert Kramer, with us this evening.
Thank you.
Welcome. And with that, I'd like to turn this discussion over to City Manager Kishnik.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. This is pretty special that we're to this point, to be honest with you. After a couple of years of talking about Move Across Troy and to have Robert Kramer here in many conversations we've had to bring it to this point. We thought it was at a time where sharing this presentation with council would be a good idea to determine where do we go from here. It's one of our strategies, as you know, from the retreat. So, we wanted to start, though, to remind everyone, this isn't just about transportation through the Big Beaver corridor. This is part of a bigger initiative, which is Move Across Troy. And Maggie Hughes is in charge of Move Across Troy. Now, she's just been moving across the country, so I hope she can bring herself back to Move Across Troy and introduce the initiative and give you about 45 seconds of background. So, Maggie?
So, there are four programs that we've now kind of included under the umbrella of Move Across Troy. And that first one being, as you're probably most familiar with, the project that I've been leading the most closely with, which is pedestrian crossing, the first one being the Automation Alley. That project is now at a stage where we can meet with some of those stakeholder partners in that area to see what their thoughts are and get their input and buy-in and make sure we're creating something that is really going to target and be used by those people. The second one is the Troy Trails and Cashways, which is under ownership of the DPW, really keeping that theme of keeping people moving. A new project, the Frightful 5K, which is going to be the 5K run centered on Big Beaver in October, which is being head up by the Nexus Assistant Program, which I'm also involved with, with Eleanor in our office and the Recreation Department. And finally, the Troy Big Beaver Shuttle, which we have Robert here talk about. Turn it over to him.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for having me, esteemed staff and audience. It's my pleasure to be here with this exciting concept. Again, as Brian mentioned, wanted to get you on board and have a discussion this evening. Have any questions or comments or thoughts, because I'm sure there's something that we haven't thought of. But this has been a number of meetings with the mayor, city manager, and some of the staff, so without further ado. So, the key objectives of the Big Beaver Business Shuttle, we'll call it, could have probably catch your name at some point in the future. But basically, we want to provide mobility options for workers and visitors along the corridor. So, you have a lot of in-traffic to your city and specifically this corridor. You also have the types of special destinations like Automation Alley that bring people in from out of town on business or for other reasons to visit. And you've got a lot of shopping, restaurants, all stuff that you're very familiar with along the corridor. So, the idea is, is there a way we can provide more mobility without having to rely on people renting a car or having to go on what's a very congested corridor, as you can see from the traffic this evening? And a couple of sub-objectives. So, specifically connecting hotels with the restaurants and shopping, so people who are staying at the hotel again, giving them an option to get around. Connecting the hotels with the Troy Transit Center, and then hopefully eventually they can connect on to other locations either via rail or being able to use kind of the economy of scale if you have that as a meeting point for airport service. That might increase the viability of having something other than kind of the single occupant airport trail. Encourage business visitors to stay, work, and play along the corridors. Instead of having, you have great assets that are unique, Children's Hospital now, but you don't have all of the accoutrements that make it so people can just come to the corridor and stay here for everything that they do. And this could be a vital part in making that more viable option. And then just overall connecting the corridor with the Transit Center again, not just for train and airport, but for the other potential future. RTA could provide service or that could connect you to the region. So, the key challenges we had, and again, this is why it's taken us a while to get to this point through the meetings, and four bullet points probably don't do it justice, but I'm going to try to summarize them. So, any transit, whether it's an airport shuttle, whether it's private business running a shuttle, if it's actually like a Smart Fix-Drive bus, there's always a balance between the frequency of the service and the travel time. So, it's like how long it takes the bus to get from point A to point B versus how many stops or the convenience of the stops. So, along this corridor, if you look, if you think, you'll pick a couple of spots you go to and from, like if you wanted to get from Melting Pot over to the Drury Inn, okay? That's a pretty unique trip in that you'd have to basically go on, you're crossing quadrants of a major freeway interchange. And so, in order to be able to do that, you basically would have to have a bus that serves as a taxicab that can pick someone up and drop them off, okay? And that's going to take a while if you've got to, as you go along the corridor, go all around, okay? But it would be the most convenient. On the other hand, if you want to talk about someone else to get from Automation Alley to Somerset, obviously they're going to want a trip that stays on Big Beaver so that it's fast, because if you're going back and forth, it could take an hour for you to get a couple miles. So, there's somewhere in the middle where you're trying to make it convenient and quick enough and frequent enough, but also get it close enough to people's destinations that they feel like it's a convenient service. That is a very difficult back and forth. And the biggest detail of that is that, again, opposite size of the corridor. So, originally, we talked about having a loop that just went all the way around, but then if you picked that Melting Pot to Drury Inn, if you didn't want to walk across the street over, you'd actually have to ride it all the way around one end of the other. And that would take a really long time. The other thing is, obviously, when you're paying drivers and paying for vehicles, you want to control the costs. I mean, if you wanted to have that taxicab equivalent service, if you paid enough drivers, of course, you could do it, but then it really is taxi cab service, and that's incredibly expensive. So, again, you're kind of trying to balance the, all those factors. And then the last thing, which is kind of to be worked out as we move forward, is educating the users and making the user experience good the first time. Because really, as really with anything, if they try it once and they're totally confused and it takes them, you know, to get lost, they're probably not going to try it again, and they're going to tell everyone else that this doesn't really work. So, as we move forward, that's something that really needs to be in mind, is marketing and mapping and wayfinding, which we'll talk a little bit about later. So, the service concept is, again, to address kind of this balancing act, is essentially two loops. So, we have a west loop and an east loop, and they would meet in the middle at Libranoy. Right now, from our kind of service, we do a lot of small bus services. Smart's were pretty familiar with how those vehicles function. I know the city owns some property on the southwest corner. We were looking at some scenarios where I would actually use kind of that trapezoid shape that goes in front of Comer Grill and then around the back of the old SBC building. That's kind of the area where the two loops would mix, but that can be a detail we develop in the future. The idea is to be, to run shuttle buses on a regular frequency along the corridor. So, Smart's Fix-Drive, if you're familiar with it, you get a schedule that says, okay, it gets to Crooks and Big Beaver at 11:15 and 11:22. Instead of having that schedule that people, that kind of gets more clunky if you're just talking about more of a spur-of-the-moment lunch trip, is they would just run on a regular frequency. So, you design the service so that people would know, okay, the bus is going to come at the most, it'll take 13 or 14 minutes, and that would be if I just missed the last one. So, instead of trying to say, okay, I'm going to time this, just, okay, hey, I know this is going to come pretty frequently for me to use. So, the stops that we would pick along the corridor would have a unique sign, and again, that's where you can kind of get into the branding. You can pick a catchy name for it. They can be a different shape, but they generally would be co-sited with Smart Bus Stop signs. The two loops, sorry, we talked about the limited time of day service initially would be, again, to control costs. The biggest cost with this, once you get the program started, is basically just paying drivers to operate the vehicles. So, the initial concept is to have a weekday service from 10 to 2 and 4 to 8, or there about. So, you're talking about eight hours per driver per day. So, the initial frequency that we have looked at is the west loop would have three buses running all the time for those hours, and that would mean that they arrive every 15 minutes or sooner. It actually probably be more like every 12 minutes or so, but we want to build in some time so that if we run into a traffic jam, that they don't get really jammed up. And then the east loop would run one bus all the time, and that would, that would be, it'd be more like every 20 minutes, but we would say it's every 30 minutes again, so that when they get in the middle, they have time to make sure that the buses can always match up, so you don't get one that misses it by just a few minutes. And part of the reason, other than controlling the costs and making something that's sustainable as a pilot program for the difference, is that if you look at the, I don't know how much farther, oh, here you go, okay. So, if you look at the major destinations on the east loop versus the west loop, there's a lot higher concentration of stuff on the west end. The yellow dots are restaurants, the green dots are hotels, and the blue-purple are kind of like other destinations, City Hall, the hospital, Somerset, Transit Center. So, again, the east loop would still have some service, so if you were connecting to Automation Alley or the Troy Sports Center, you'd be able to take advantage of the service rather than just starting with kind of a pilot of just the west. So, some of the key details of the service are that it has to be, no, we do the first one first. At least, the concept is it would be free to ride, so there'd be no fare. If that wanted, if you wanted to change that in the future, you can. Just for now, we're assuming that it would be free to ride. Again, it's more convenient, people don't have to fumble around with money or get change back, that sort of thing. The service would be open to the public. That's a key component of making sure that this doesn't run afoul of any rules for charter service or school bus service with the feds, which do provide a lot of funding to Smart and to your current Troy Medigo program. So, we want to make sure we don't upset any of them. The vehicles would be ADA accessible with lifts for wheelchairs. If anyone who had a wheelchair, they'd be able to get access. If you didn't do that for some reason, like if you wanted a certain kind of bus that didn't have lifts, you'd have to have something in place to provide that equivalent. So, basically, if you went with buses that didn't have lifts, you'd have to have kind of like a wheelchair van or something that call all the time. So, if anyone said, hey, I have a wheelchair, you'd have to send somebody out to get them. So, it makes, this makes sense. All of our small buses have a lift. Again, the stops should be co-sited with Smart Bus Stops, and that helps when we put in investments like benches and shelters and bike racks, trash cans. It just, they look nice, at least in my opinion. If you think otherwise, let me know, and I'll make sure that it's addressed. But they have nice amenities, and that makes it more comfortable to use the service, right? Than just a new stop sign that's kind of in the middle of no place. And then again, the busiest stops, if they don't already have shelters, that's something that we'll talk about later. Again, is Smart's contribution, or one of our contributions, is installing our new style of shelters. If you just put in one on Libranoy just south of Big Beaver, they look really nice. They actually have solar lighting built in and with a panel on the top. Good. They're glad, like kind of a curved glass, they're very sharp. So, the stops for this service are the highest, if they don't already have shelters, we make sure that they have them. So, the potential collaborations, kind of if we're moving forward with the concept as presented. Should I stop and ask your questions now, or do you want to go all the way to the end first?
We'd like to go all the way to the end, but if somebody wants to go.
No, I'm good.
I don't want to stop that a little bit.
Sometimes I get on a roll.
Take notes and kind of like to go like, yes, that's.
All right. So, moving forward, some of the things, and again, the next slide, we'll talk about the next slide first. So, we talked about kind of a public, it's a public-private partnership or potential. The city of Troy and Smart are the two publics. And then we would like to develop, and this is kind of where we're at now, is moving forward, to develop some partnerships either financially or with assistance with certain services or just publicity for things of pulling in some of the private sectors, the business community, hospitality, maybe some of like Children's Hospital or other areas to lend support and services. So, and this is, I'm saying it just so that you know it's within the rules, is that these businesses can provide financial support to offset some of the costs of operating the service. Part of the way you can acknowledge them is when you do the paint scheme or the wraps, which we'll get to at the very end, you can acknowledge the names of the businesses along the corridor. The maps, the materials, the website, they can all have advertisements and/or business information, again, to help with the cost feature, but also making it a cost productive service for residents and businesses. Smart is going to, at least initially, kind of the thought is, we procure the vehicles for the service, the shelters, and any other equipment. So, if we need GPS units, or they have GPS and scheduling software, dispatch units that are really cool that some of their agencies have that we provide pass-through for. And then Troy, the city of Troy would focus more on the management of the staffs or the drivers, and if there's a dispatcher, and actually operating the service. And the reason why we prefer that method, and I think the city does too, but I'll speak only for myself in this case, is that it gives the city the ultimate control over everything, as far as the fares, the routing, the hours. Everything is just an easy decision for the city to make rather than having to interact with Smart and hire procedures for larger decisions. So, with that, I'll go backwards, last one. With that in mind, the potential future collaborations and enhancements, kind of a way to harness and make the most out of the public-private partnership, is to think of other ways that some of the advanced businesses, because you guys have a really good suite of residents or businesses along the corridor. So, things like developing a new mobile app that has real-time location and time of the next vehicle, having like an interactive corridor map app where you can have business information, and people can kind of navigate that as they're using the shuttles. It kind of works both ways. You could have shuttle information in an app that's paired for reservations for restaurants or for other attractions, hotel rooms. I think there's a lot of opportunities there, but again, we kind of would look to the business community that really stand to benefit from that to kind of tell us what they'd like us to work through. Developing and implementing wayfinding, again, if you got to the point, the best efficiency of this project would be if you could get people to cross the street. Because then, even though the loops are smaller, the quickest way would be if you know, you don't have to go a little ways down, find a good safe crossing, which you guys have a really good model of that, but if we could get a few more of those, get people to cross the street. And that leads to the last bullet, which is coordinating with MDOT to try to leverage the great innovative partnership that we're talking about here to kind of budge them off the, off their mountain, so to speak, for a crossing between the Marriott and the Columbia Centers. That'd be kind of like something we would hope to get out of this, otherwise they seem to be very staunch in their opposition to. So, you have a copy of the map that has all of the locations labeled. I have already teased it a little bit earlier in the presentation, but this is the corridor. Essentially, you have, the north is up on this map, so you'd have to turn the Cooper Lancer Style. But you have the Transit Center down here, and then basically, you know, Somerset is in this area. This is the quarter we're talking about. This is the two loops, west and east. This is all of the points of interest you've identified. It's kind of like the drivers of the need for the shuttle. And then this is them all labeled. So, yellow are restaurants, green are hotels, and blue are kind of the civic other destinations. So, with that, I'll go through these pictures real quick of kind of what the vehicles could look like, because we certainly want to make sure that they're distinct from Smart's small bus service, because this is not, it's not the same service. This is actually a good example, if you're interested in the concept. This is a very well-developed example of what we're talking about. This is sponsored by Downtown Alliance in New York City. So, this is actually downtown, so you know, former World Trade Center towers would be kind of here, you've got Battery Park. This, they have live on their website at every time. You can see every vehicle is listed on here, and then the red dots are the stops. That's kind of the direction this could go eventually, if it really picks up. So, if you're in a restaurant, you'd be able to pull up and know exactly, okay, there's a shuttle two blocks away. And this is what their vehicles look like, so they're kind of a, they stand out, but in a good way. Here's a couple of examples of kinds of more traditional small buses. So, this is actually an airport shuttle in Miami, but you can see, there's a lot of things that you can do with wraps to make them look more exciting than just a pair of transit bus. This one shows the lift on the side, that's what this extra door is. Here's a New York one again, and just an example, you can really put anything on them you want. You can put pictures, you can put colors. And then finally, I have, and this is kind of just to throw out there, but there are regular buses you can get that have, actually, the exterior one looks like an old-style trolley. Again, you want to weigh, does that match the vision and the feel, the character that you want for the corridor, or do you want something that's, you know, sleeker, like one of these examples? That's, you know, a pretty minor detail when you get to that in the process, but I thought I'd kind of throw it all out there. So, hopefully, I was informed of it, and I guess I'm going to go for your question. Oh, okay. So, we talked here about the initial frequency. Again, this is based on eight hours of service every weekday, so no holidays, no weekends. Running this frequency, the driver cost, which is going to be the main cost, is a little under $100,000. So, that's kind of the scale that we're talking about. The procurement of the vehicles and the equipment and the shelters through Smart is something that we can use, we can leverage our grant dollars and some of our millage proceeds to do that. So, that would essentially be cost neutral. Again, the administration cost, us procuring them, all that stuff is kind of part of the partnership, so to speak. And then the city, again, would be responsible for the administration and the cost of managing the drivers, you know, server costs, gasoline. The maintenance would kind of be 50/50, because we provide maintenance parts only, the cost of parts only for any opt-in community for us. So, if you need to help with maintenance, you'd basically just be paying for the parts, and maybe I have that mixed up. But anyway, that would be, you know, those are how, that would be how we shared the cost between the different partners, and then the business community or other stakeholders could kind of come in with the other stuff like marketing, printing, website, that sort of stuff.
But you buy the buses.
Correct. Now, timing-wise, since you mentioned that one in particular, timing-wise, the purchasing of these kind of buses is not as long as the Fix-Drive buses, which are two years. These buses are, can be anywhere from six to 12 months. We have some vehicles that we could kind of reactivate, or as we get new vehicles, we retire vehicles, and there's usually good vehicles left there that we would otherwise use as spare. So, along the way of saying, basically, if you wanted to start it before we could procure new vehicles, we could get it off the ground with some existing vehicles as smart as, especially since we're really only talking about four buses. Did I miss anything? I believe so.
I think the only thing that we might have missed a little bit is that when we had our last meeting, that John Hurtel was, was here for that meeting, and I think he was going to be here this evening, but, you know, there was a conflict. But, you know, he seemed very, you know, when he and I talked, he seemed very excited about being a partner with Troy and trying to kind of make this work. So, I think that's the only other thing that I could think of, that we had a discussion. John seemed to be pretty excited about the project I thought. So, I think that was a great overview. I've seen some of it, so it makes a lot more sense, but I'm sure there's questions.
So, curiosity, who pays the insurance for the buses going up and down for accidents? Is it picked up by Troy, or do you guys want to pick it all up?
That's a good question.
I thought so.
Our standard procedure, our standard procedure now is, like for your Troy Medigo vehicles, we procure them, but then we require you to carry the insurance. So, I hadn't thought about that for this case, but I would lean toward that direction. Basically, we would lease, the way we do it now is we procure the vehicles, and then we lease them to the city for a dollar for the useful life. But we do require that you guys maintain them in a good state of order and carry insurance.
So, in terms of maintaining them, my assumption is that we could use our DPW team and are on board with that idea.
On board with that idea? We're really just in the concept stages. I can't say that Brian already is leaving here. Kurt's here enough. You're on board, right?
My understanding is that you maintain them, right, and then just charges for parts.
Well, you could go either, either way. We have the option, and what's great for the city of Troy is that our terminal is in the city of Troy, so.
That's what I thought.
Either way, sometimes cities like to maintain their own vehicles, sometimes they don't, or it can be, you can do both. We're still discussing that because of who contributes what. That's one of those easier ones for us to contribute, you know what I mean? There's economies of scale, we do a lot of work for everyone else already. That's, it's not 100% which way we're going.
Right. But it's a, exploring the idea, I mean, yeah.
I've got a handful, but, you know, I want to hog some time so I can just run through them, so exhaust.
Absolutely.
Other than picking and choosing. You want, you got one specific?
Mine are probably, not so much questions for you, but questions in general. I, so I, there's probably some overlap, probably, my guess, but, you know, I'll.
I'll yield my time to council members. See what happens after that.
All right. So, just going down to this, first off, from John R. Coolidge, that's not something, I know there's some restaurants down there, and there's a lot of businesses between John R. and Coolidge that's not in the equation at all.
We've not looked at that area yet.
Okay.
We tried to, we kept it between John R. Coolidge down to the Transit Center, just because of the concentration.
Okay. Where you get traffic there and.
Yeah, you get too far out, it just. But if I could just throw my two cents in, when we did talk about expanding, we thought, we should see if it'll work here first. Because if it won't work here in this corridor, it's not going to work anywhere in Troy probably. So, we did leave open the idea that if we could expand to Maple, Maple Road or the, you know, the theater, and maybe, you know, it's not like we said no, that we're not going to do that. It was just, we wanted to see if it would work.
In your initial phase, let's make it work, and then.
That's the really best part of this, if I can interject, is that if you got this up and running, you kind of work out the bugs, it would be really easy to say, hey, if we added another bus, we can extend it an extra mile, we can head down to the theater. So, that's the, you know, getting the critical mass first is the top part.
Okay. Next question.
Hold on, Councilmember, because the mayor raises a great point, going the other way. You know, you see red and blue, you know, we'd be remiss if we didn't say, we also talked about just doing the red. To start out, I mean, because that's where the concentration is. So, we're, again, you know, we're just looking at this, is what makes sense to lift it off the ground if we're going to.
Next item was marketing and build awareness to local businesses and travelers, right? So, I think initially on the Transit Center, we had talked about kiosks and that kind of thing. So, somebody comes into the Transit Center, and then, you know, they just kind of terminate there, right? Now, you got to rent a car, have already made reservations for that. But if we can get them from there to a hotel or whatnot, how do we tell people that that's available? Or from a business standpoint, the Columbia Center, you know, how do, how do all the employees that work in those locations get the information that they need to know that's a viable source of transportation?
That's a key component, and that would be if we can get a business along the corridor who's into mobile apps, that's really the best way, from our perspective. We've got a lot of feedback. We, Smart has that, where you can track the Fix-Drive buses, you can get schedules and everything. We get a ton of great feedback from it, because no matter, most people have a smartphone these days. So, no matter where you are, you don't have to figure out where in the Columbia Center is the poster that tells you about the router, you know, wherever it is.
Saying my dad's going to get it. That's right. The drivers, you know, you supply the buses, and then we're responsible for the route. So, are those our employees that drive the buses? Is that.
I think it would be the same model you use for your Troy Medigo, which is basically the same administrative structure we're talking about. We buy, procure vehicles, we lease them to you for nothing, and then you guys have city of Troy employees that are actually driving those vehicles. driving those vehicles. So we have the same idea.
So we, so it's our obligation to find somebody that is going to work ten to two on all four, four buses, and then also four to eight. Week, no weekend service at all, so how does that play into if there's a, a tournament or something at the hockey arena, and it's a big weekend, and you want to get people moving around, but it's a weekend, we don't have service for them? Is there any thought to maybe a special service?
Well, and that's one of the best parts about, again, having it be a city Troy function versus a SMART function, is that you can easily just do that. You can say, hey, I've got enough of my employee pool that can drive on this weekend, and this is an important event for the city, so we're going to take the four buses, and we're going to roll out weekday service this weekend, because there's a tournament. Or we're going to put a service out all day. It's really, it really is totally within the control of the city, how you want to operate the service.
So the initial hours is just, again, to get it kind of running, and then we can add on.
We talked about the same concept, that let's start during the week, and, you know, it takes off, or, good point, if something special is on the weekend, we control that, it's up to us.
The vehicles that you have, again, I hate to hog all the time, sorry.
Go ahead.
The trolleys that you showed up there, if we opted for those, are those, you have accessible versions of those too? But, okay, that could be easily done. Yeah, that was it, that's it?
My, first, I appreciate the presentation. I think it's fascinating to actually see something in a proposal, and I thank the city staff for putting this together, because I think it's something people are talking about. But of course, I have a butt. No, but I do have a question. I mean, do we have an example of another municipality that's rolled something out like this, not downtown New York, where they're used to public transportation? That's a great look, but it's not the same. Are there other comparable cities and corridors that have done this? Do we have any idea that this type of would actually work for us, based on statistics or...
I think Grosse Pointe.
Grosse Pointe just did.
Yeah, so, yes, Grosse Pointe, actually, they use some of their SMART millage dollars to buy a, one that looks just like that green trolley. Grosse Pointe Woods did, they have one that runs on Mack Avenue, and then Farm City have the one, that's one that runs on Kirchfield. And I think they call there, there's the K line, and it's connecting. They have a couple different, if you're not familiar, they have three different business districts along Kirchfield, basically. And they've had some pretty good success. Again, they're running, it's a free, free shuttle, they have stops, they have a special K sign at them. So that's a pretty good example. This is a lot bigger scale, as far as the volume of traffic you're dealing with, the distance you're going, the number of destinations. And again, in that case, all the businesses are right up along the street, whereas here you have some that are set back four or five hundred feet from the sidewalk. So it's a little bit different, but in this area, that's probably the best example. There has been some talk from the business community in Novi, that they would like to look at something like this that could connect their malls, which are probably second most successful after Somerset is Twelve Oaks, their convention center, and then their hotels in the region, or in that area, kind of with some sort of shuttle. And, you know, they haven't really got very far in it, but that's, it's a very similar kind of situation that you guys have here.
This is more for the city. Do we have statistics on the amount of people that are in this area during those times that don't have their own transportation to begin with? Because my question, my, my concern is, if I'm taking a trolley of sorts that has to make a bunch of stops in bad traffic anyway, it still is going to be quicker, more convenient for me to drive my own car. And I know that there's a lot of people who are trying to get away from that. But I, I don't know, I mean, how many people down there, how many people could potentially use this service that are not driving in their own cars?
I don't know of anyone, but that's, it's just that Glenn, you want to make something up, or...
I can talk a little bit with discussions with the hospitality committee, and I know Councilman Harrison goes to almost every one of them. It's a constant theme that you hear from the hotels and the restaurant people, is that they, they do provide their own shuttle service to some degree, but their, their theme always to us is, we need help moving people in our hotels, and getting them to restaurants. And, you know, the Altar example, I think, you know, just sticks in my brain forever, isn't that Altar does not bring any people that come to their company to stay in Troy, because they, they want to be able to walk, or to easily get to restaurants, or some other activity in the city that they put them in. So they put, here's, here's a business in Troy that chooses to put their people up in Birmingham or Royal Oak. So I think Councilman Harrison can, can speak to that as well. The constant theme that we hear in the hospitality committee is that there are plenty of people here that want this type of transportation in the city.
Question, piggyback on that, though, is, you know, I had that note on here about business travelers on the weekends. So Altar, that, you know, sometimes people come in Monday through Friday, yes, but, you know, they may have weekend stays, and if they come in, you know, and cars are still going to want to go to Birmingham or whatnot, that they can get service, especially if you don't offer that service on the weekend. So is there any, any availability to them, or is that just kind of another second phase of the rollout?
Yeah, I think it's, yeah, the second phase, but I think most, most business people come in Monday through Friday. I think the Marriott and the hotels are busiest Monday through Friday, not on the weekends. But not to say that that wouldn't be something we might want to do, though.
As Robert said, since we're operating it, we could, you know, see how that's going. Put data together. I know the hospi, you know, we don't, we don't, my answer is, we really don't have that data. That's the, that's the honest answer. But the hospitality committee, I bet, could put some data together fairly quickly, because it's been on their radar for so long. And then the, the weekend services, if we're running it, you know, the great example is a hockey tournament. How to get, they want to get to Somerset. I didn't say who, but certain people want, who are at the ice rink, want to get to Somerset. And then when they're at the hotel, they can just, will not have to drive down to the rink. It's a pretty, it's a pretty solid proposal. Now, just see how it goes.
Seems like there's a lot of time that would get lost going to the Transit Center when there's only, aren't there only two trains that come to the Transit Center, and one of them's that'll lower midnight? So I, don't we waste a lot of time and resources? And, I mean, would that, the schedule be adjusted somehow, so it doesn't have to make that full loop when there's nobody at the Transit Center for a lot of those hours?
I think part of the idea of the Transit Center is not just for train traffic, but maybe, I'm feeling if I'm missing something, but the idea of having an airport shuttle, whether it's Scoot, or Lyft, or some private person who could run a shuttle to and from the airport for an affordable rate, is that they want everyone to organize in one area. So that's kind of the natural, you go to the Troy Transit Center, you can use the train, you can get shuttles to the airport. Someday, you know, if they have high-speed rail, they might increase the frequency, like Amtrak's plan is to make it six, I think it's three, three round trips today, but two or three, whatever it is. Their plan is to double it, once they get the high-speed rail. It doesn't, it's not high-speed to get up here from Dearborn, but they're going to increase the frequency, because they'll have more riders. So there is some opportunity from that standpoint. But your point is well made, in that it could be something that, you know, there's, there's a million ways you could do this, but you could pick a spot on the corridor, or like maybe from Somerset, maybe you make it three loops. You know, maybe you make a red, a blue, and a green, and the green is just for people who are going to the Transit Center once an hour. The good part is, you have vehicles and a system in place, and it's something that we, once a quarter, we adjust, we make little tweaks to all of our schedules. And it just, you learn based on what your experience is. And that's the good part about having a system that's flexible, is that you can change it. You can track ridership, and you'll know exactly who uses it, who doesn't.
There's also more in the Transit Center area than just the Transit Center, those target goals and whatnot. So if people are during workday wanting to head over there to do shopping in errands, but not drive it.
Well, and there's Whole Foods is here, too. I mean, if you had a stop that's at the corner, people could take advantage of that, straight along as well.
But your, your, your point, when we were, when we were originally talking about this, and I think Glenn can, can add to this, when we go to the hospitality committee meetings, we've talked to Scoot, and we've talked to some others that wanted to put transportation to the airport from the Transit Center. But until you can get people to there, Scoot's not going to, not going to be there. So it's, you know, what comes first? So we're hoping that once the hospitality committee hears about this, and this is probably the first time that they're hearing anything concrete, I have talked to them a little bit. But once this concept, if we do choose to keep going, then Scoot is probably going to have more of an interest in, in branching from there. So I think our whole point of going to the Transit Center is, is the airport. That, that, that's the main reason, I think.
When you couple, they have over a hundred parking spaces there, so that if there's a built-in incentive for Scoot, too, you'd say, hey, we'll bring people on the shuttle. And there's fifty, I think Amtrak only has a whole lot of fifty of them. So there's other spaces that we can use to, to people who want to drive.
So, so the buses, you're going to, you're going to prep the buses, you're going to wrap them for us, any which way you want? And then you said a hundred thousand, it's a hundred thousand a year, coming out of the city governors. Is that essentially for the, the employees? So we lease the vehicles for a dollar, and then the hundred grand is presumably for the...
That's drivers, yeah.
Based on the hours that he talked about, the days that he talked about. So when that number, you know, is a hundred fifty, or fifty, whatever, and you wonder what happened to the hundred thousand, just, just know it's based on these assumptions.
And it wouldn't necessarily have to all come out of the city governors. That's where you could, when you talk to the hospitality committee or other business groups, they can contribute to this.
I have done that, and I've gotten extremely good feedback from the hotels. They have shuttles now that they, they pay for, and it costs a lot of money for them to have them, and they're very rarely used. They would love to be a partner with the city in this kind of sector. I'm very confident that we can get that cost down, down almost to zero.
The outfitted price for the, the stops, you guys take care of that?
Shelters you're talking about?
The shelters, yeah.
Yeah, shelters and the concrete pads and trash cans, benches.
How many of those will we be adding on, do you think?
I wouldn't even want to make a guess, but I mean, oh, fine, I'll make a guess. Let's say maybe...
Your cost, I don't care.
Maybe, I'd say at least three on each side of the corridor. Also, maybe six total. There's already quite a few that are out there, and most of the stops also already have some sort of concrete, either walk-up or some, I think there's a couple that may have a bench, but not a shelter. So we'll be look at that and see where the highest usage is, and that's where we put, you know, Transit Center already has some, I think the east end where the mid-mock crossing will be. I think that those are already in the design.
And SMART pays for the trash removal and all the, all the maintenance of each of those locations?
We partner with the city on that. Because we have, we have two hundred and fifty shelters in our system, and we have four guys who are in charge of everything from replacing glass, and trash, for twelve hundred square miles. So we, we look at the highest use ones, but usually we try to engage either the business owners, or the corridor group, or the city or something. It usually just needs to be, you know, once a week or so. Usually takes care of. Okay. That's where I was cleaning, if the, if the glass is broken, or if there's graffiti, or whatever, you know, we come up and fix that. No problem.
So, this may be the wrong time, this might be the next study session that we have these questions, or it might be the offline conversations. But are we looking at, we tried this for a year, if we venture down this path, are we looking at a two-year pilot phase? What kind of timeframe are we talking about? Am I too really good at that?
No, I think that's, that's obviously the, you know, the question of the day, is the cost, and then what, you know, how are you going to roll this out, the timeline?
And, you know, let's say it does, it's a bust, and it doesn't work, which is possible. Having said that, I think, I want to be clear, I, I don't think that's what will happen. But, but assuming that could, what's our hour, if you will? How does that work?
Yeah, that's a really good question. And it's giving me a little bit of pause about the trolley-shaped vehicles, because if, if they're just regular small buses that are wrapped, then it'd be very easy. You can just lay off the people you hired, and we can pretend like it never happened, because we'll be able to take the vehicles and put them into service elsewhere. If they're the trolley-based ones, it might be a little trickier, because we don't have any others like that in our system. So that might actually be something to consider.
Okay.
Depending on, I haven't got a lot of strong feelings from the mayor, or Brian, or any staff member, that they are in love with the trolley-style ones or not. But that would be something, other than that, I can't think of anything. Because again, we're co-siting with SMART stops, with our fixed-ride service. So even if the shuttle goes away, the shelters, the benches, everything will still be used, just not for this.
So your question, though, also was, what do we, is this a trial? You know, at some point, you have an upfront investment, so you have to give it a chance. Going in a business, and it's year two, you say, I can't make it. You know, at least give yourself a little bit of time to see how it goes, get the word going, get the app developed. So we would develop, you know, that kind of timeframe, and that kind of evaluation analysis, whether it's two, three years. But give it a, give it a real shot, and get the hospitality, hospitality committee involved. I got to believe Somerset and Troy Sports Center, you know, those bookends are going to have serious interest. So it's one of those where we'll look at it, definitely at, at year one and year two.
If we were giving it two or three, are trolleys an option then?
They can always use trolleys. Let me, I sometimes speak for Robert.
I mean, if you want my honest answer, the useful life for those vehicles is seven years, so. Not really. I, I would, I feel much more comfortable that there wouldn't be that pressure to try to go on to something. We could just pick some really nice, regularly looking vehicles, and have a cool wrap on them. Or not, I mean, if it's a deal breaker, it's a deal breaker. We can look into it.
I think it, those are, I mean, that's something to really explore. I mean, it, the vehicles themselves could be, you look at communities that have trolleys, and there's some sort of endearing, homespun, folksy thing about that.
Very true. That's why they have them.
I will say, some people ride a trolley, but they're not going to ride a city bus or something like that. That makes a big difference in perception.
Initially, it would make sense, though, if you knew what we got, and see if, you know, see if there's any kind of legs on it whatsoever, maybe move into that.
Just a consideration, you know, I mean, that's, because there is a reason why the manufacturers make a whole line that looks just like trolleys, because...
It works.
Well, like, they make people smile, that's for sure.
All right, functionally, I mean, you know, is this a new department that you're going to put together to kind of run this, or how do you envision that?
Glenn's done such a good job running the Transit Center, man, marketing. It, it becomes a situation, Dave, where we're getting to the point now where we have to figure out who's, who's going to run this. Is it going to be community affairs? Is it going to be engineering? Clearly, it's a public work. They knew, well, everyone knew I was going to end up there. Clearly, transportation is, is, operation is where it ends up. Now, how do we, how do we rearrange the organization to have, to oversee that? Recreation is, Elaine's not here, but, you know, they run the Medigo, and Medigo has its own office right at the community center. So it, it's also ready-made for that kind of oversight. So there's a few options.
I was getting very frustrated this year that we were losing our season to, if we were going to start this, that we were losing, and Brian knows I've been frustrated for a little while here, so the sooner, the better for me. Quite, I think we're losing, you know, if we're going to try it this year, we're losing some of the good weather, I think, so.
And heaters and buses, all right?
They do.
Air conditioning, too.
So, are there any other questions for, for this meeting?
Just a quick one. Now, I would think we're going to do this logic, it looks like the logical place to do this is with the red line. That's where all your hotels are, your restaurants. Why wouldn't we kind of look at using that as our test case, rather than go all the way up to, to the hockey? Now, you might have a couple of hock, I know people play hockey every day, but I would think... I would think that that would be the best test case down there. And then Chattanooga, kind of see they have a line just like this, where they have, connects all their restaurants and they also, they have a propane bus. They don't use any gas, and it's like a jump on, jump off type bus, and it's used continually by people up there. So it's a, so it's a nice idea, it's very nice that we, I like tying into the transit center, because that's why we built the transit center. We want something. So, all I get by now is, but I guess I would probably put my efforts on to the, I think, with the biggest payback, which is going to be the Red Line, and then maybe expand into the other one.
We talked, we talked about that too in our previous, and we just thought it might send the wrong message. And we have so many new restaurants that are, are starting to go from Liverny's East. And one of our great partners is, is the Ice Arena. And.
Automation Aliens.
Automation Aliens and Altar is over there. So we, we discussed that too, but we just thought we should, we should do it all the way to the genre. That was, that was our, after we kicked it around for a while. But there's nothing to say that if that doesn't look like it's a rug that's being used very much, that we don't just say, okay, we're just going to do the Red Lines. I think there's some real good restaurants east of Liverny's now that are, it's pretty good. Maybe we can encourage more if we have a trolley system going all the way down there. Get another hotel down there. I always thought Stevenson might be a good product, there's going to be, how many hotels on Stevenson you're proposing? Four, four or five. I think the, I was hoping tonight to maybe get some consensus to go the next step further. I'd like to, to do a presentation to the hospitality committee, because I think they're going to be very excited to hear, hear about this. And I think we'll, we'll get some feedback from them, how much they're going to be willing to contribute to this. And I think they're going to be a good partner for us too. So if we could get consensus to keep moving forward. And Brian, maybe you could have staff reach out to Duino, hospitality committee, and see if we can do a presentation and bring them up to speed.
According to Robert's schedule, and presentations are pretty well put together now. It's just a matter of getting on the agenda and getting the word out and listening.
And maybe after that, we should have another study session about specifics. Because I think there is a, a little bit of a consensus to go towards the trolley design, quite honestly. Probably need to firm something like that up, but maybe we need to make more of a commitment to, to the project. And maybe we'll have a better idea about that after we talk to the hospitality committee.
Could I add one thing? Just because I think you mentioned propane twice. We do have, we're converting, some other time I can make a presentation about all the different fleets we have, but the ones that we operate with Smart employees, which is our connector service, we're actually in the process of switching those all over to propane. So we do have a propane fueling facility at our terminal, so. That's something that's important to the city, you know, from a cost standpoint, it's very cost-effective. So that's, I just want to throw that out there, that's something that could be part of a future discussion as well.
When we talk about the trolley cars, pardon me while I just can't think out loud with everyone. When you think about Big Beaver being part of the city of Troy, the city is very much a family-friendly, yes, there's businesses like crazy, but it's also very much a residential bedroom community. So that, part of the reason you're hearing me lean toward that trolley car is I think it, it fits and is consistent, and our residential community will also feel comfortable and engaged with the idea. Maybe I'm off, and I don't have data or statistics, I'm going with my.
I'd like to listen with the hospitality committee.
See what they say and see where these work, but I think we have to remember what our community is, you know, it's, it's that balance between the business and the residence. So I think, I'm trying to think, why am I leaning toward that idea? And I think that's it, and I don't know if that has merit or not, but I just say that out loud for, for the exploration.
Something I thought of, again, in the spirit of thinking out loud, is that the city could potentially use those buses as their Medego fleet. That's kind of a little goofy, but it's an option that's could be out there. If we want to talk about kind of a backup plan is, if you got the trolley vehicles, they all have lifts, and if you get three or four years into the program, then those can be used to replace some of the more standard vehicles in the medical fleet. That could be a backup plan that might work.
Tom?
Yeah, do we know how to go through snow? I mean, typically I see the trolleys in pure water and, you know, southern ports, you mentioned Chattanooga. So that might be a concern, you know, the skidder mobility and.
They're just like regular, they're just like the buses, just outside, they have the same clearance as regular buses.
Good.
We just have an express lane for the bus that right lane.
Right. You want some five or four two.
Dedicated lanes would make this project much more successful.
On the maintenance, maintenance portion of it, so we could either be or Smart can do it. Is, is there anything specific that our, our fleet maintenance division would need to maybe get retrained, overtrained on regarding those? Or is this a capability is there that you could?
You know, the only thing that I think of right when you say that is the, a lot of times the trolley buses are actually more equivalent to our fixed route vehicles, so they're kind of bigger than the, what you have now is twenty-three-foot small bus vehicles that your DPW is very familiar with, you know, from Troy Medego. They should be pretty close, though.
So they already do the Medego maintenance?
Yeah. If you got into propane, maybe they'd have to get a couple, have to get trained on how to work on propane agents, although they're really not that different either.
Very good, any other questions?
I have a question, I want to make a comment, if you're wrapping up here. We've been dealing, you know, since I arrived three and a half years ago, dealing with Smart on many, many issues. I hope tonight everyone heard very positive commentary from Smart, and a very positive partnership opportunity, whether it's this project or another one. I think in the, the time that Robert's been promoted, and what did you do, jump about three rugs? But as the Assistant General Manager, things have, it's a, it's a real positive experience, and I hope everyone has heard that firsthand tonight, not just coming from us as staff.
As a brief aside, my first task when I started at Smart as a grand analyst was to get this zoning board to approve a security funds for our terminal. Everyone was very impressed, so. Very much. They couldn't do it, they were going to send the money back. I said, let me give it a try, because that's what we have done in the private sector before, was planning and zoning and stuff, so.
No, I appreciate, I, I told Brian I was pleasantly surprised how Smart quickly wanted to become a partner with the city of Troy on this project, so. It's good news, I think.
Good my pleasure, thank you.
Thank you, Robert. There's no one in the audience, so I think we'd like to speak to see you, so we're adjourned and we'll be at seven thirty in the conference room.